It's to subdivide an existing 2.02 hectare parcel containing an existing residence and yard to create two separate titles. This is a country residential subdivision, and as you said, it was subdivision 25CY12. The owner of the property is Travis Tucksher, and this is at Plan 9210765 Block D Lot 8. This application is intended to subdivide a 2.02 hectare or 4.99 acre parcel containing an existing residence and yard to create a separate title. The proposed lot 9 is .795 hectares or 1.96 acres in size, while the proposed lot 10 is 1.23 hectares or 3.04 acres in size. The property is located just east of Range Road 60 and is adjacent to South Boundary Road on the City of Medicine Hat boundary. There are no oil or gas wells within 100 meters of the proposed subdivision. The proposed subdivision is located within an existing multi-parcel country residential subdivision which was approved in 1991. While the existing yard site has an access approach, the applicant is proposing that it is wide enough to accommodate shared access between the proposed parcels. The proposed lot 10 contains an existing residence and yard and a dugout and is serviced by Green Valley Water Co-op and a private septic system. Development Permit 2570 was issued earlier this year for the demolition of the existing structure on the proposed lot 9, leaving the parcel currently vacant. If the subdivision is approved, the applicant intends to sell the newly created parcel for residential development, and the landowner has expressed intent to utilize a well or cistern and a septic field to service the new lot. The proposed subdivision is located within the City of Medicine Hat long-term urban growth area of the tri-area intermunicipal development plan. In reference to our legislation, the South Saskatchewan Regional Plan states that municipalities are to identify their agricultural land and to limit fragmentation and conversion to non-agricultural uses. Under the strategic section of the plan Human Development, it states that municipalities are responsible for the planning and development processes that ensure land is available for developments such as residential, commercial, and industrial lands, municipal roads, and water and wastewater treatment facilities to accommodate population growth. Section 663 of the Municipal Government Act states that a subdivision authority may not require the owner of a parcel of land that is subject of a proposed subdivision to provide reserve if reserve was previously provided in respect of the land that is subject of the subdivision. And the reserve requirement was previously met through a previous subdivision. Part 311 Road Access of the subdivision regulations of the Municipal Government Act states that every proposed subdivision must provide direct access to a road or lawful means of access satisfactory to the subdivision authority to each lot that is created. Section 2.6 City of Medicine Hat Long-Term Urban Growth Area of the tri-area intermunicipal development plan states that the intent of the area is to retain the existing agricultural and country residential uses along with any recreation uses of large parcels in the area in the near midterm with the expectation that the area will urbanize in the long term. The restrictions on multi-lot country residential development will ensure that large parcels are retained for the economical subdivision for urban development. The City of Medicine Hat Long-Term Urban Growth Area policy states, "In the short, medium term, an existing agricultural support, country residential, and any recreational uses within the area are permitted to exist." Limited residential parcels up to five acres will be eligible for further subdivision into smaller lots. Existing farmsteads with a residence will be permitted to be separated or subdivided from a larger agricultural parcel up to a maximum size of 10 acres. Any farmstead separation with a residence of up to 10 acres will be permitted to subdivide into one additional residential parcel up to three acres. Applicants for a residential lot or farmstead separation should consult with the county staff regarding site selection considerations and may also be required to provide a land dedication for future road corridors which would be exempt from the three and 10 acre maximums. No new industrial or commercial developments will be permitted on those parcels, five acres or less. A single backyard secondary suite will be permitted on those parcels, five acres or less. Area structure plans will ultimately be required prior to any future urban developments in the area. No new piped water or sanitary connections to the City of Medicine Hat services will be provided to the area until urbanization occurs. Any new residential units will be required to have onsite sanitary systems with water supply being provided via either onsite systems or water co-op services pending available capacity. And home-based businesses and occupations may be permitted in the City of Medicine Hat Long-Term Urban Growth Area as per Cypress County's Land Use Bylaw, providing no negative impacts on the surrounding area are generated. Section 4.1.27 Subdivision Tri-Area IDP of the Municipal Development Plan states that the county shall follow all applicable policies within the tri-area IDP related to subdivision for the lands within the boundary. And finally, utility easements may be required between the proposed parcel and the remainder of the Hamlet industrial title. So we did circulate this application, and Cypress County Finances replied that there is a dust abatement local improvement associated with the property. It will be required that we designate the dust control patch to both parcels to align with the dust control policy. Cypress County Public Works replied that the existing approach may need to be widened or extended to accommodate the two lots. Fortis replied that they have reviewed the plan and determined no easement is required. Tellus replied they have no concern with the proposed activities. St. Mary's River Irrigation District replied that if the subdivision is approved, the district requires that the following conditions be met. SMURD has some existing capacity issues in this area. The applicant may continue to utilize yard water for the existing yard site through their household purposes agreement with the district as long as the use is residential. However, if the use of the lot changes to industrial purposes, a different agreement will be required, and depending on the requirements, may not be approved by SMURD. And SMURD will not allow a second property to use SMURD water in any capacity. In order for SMURD to execute the consent to register subdivision, any outstanding balances owed by the applicant will need to be paid in full. City of Medicine Hat Electric replied that the proposed subdivision is outside of the franchise area, so have no comments. Town of Red Cliff replied that they have reviewed the proposed application and offers no comments. The City of Medicine Hat replied they have no concerns with the proposed subdivision. Green Valley Water Association replied that they are at capacity and no new water connections are available. In addition, the association's curb stop and associated infrastructure that currently services the existing residents will encroach onto the newly subdivided parcel. Therefore, the association is requesting for the following conditions should the subdivision be approved: A) That the applicant at their expense survey and create the appropriate easement regarding the GBWA infrastructure and right of access to the same as it pertains to the proposed subdivision or any variation thereof; B) That the applicant at their expense have the necessary easement registered to the parcel with Alberta land titles; C) And that the applicant at their expense ensures that any sale of the proposed subdivided parcel or any variation thereof includes a clear statement that the purchaser is aware of and acknowledges that no water service connection to the association's infrastructure is available and that the association's infrastructure shall not be accessed or disturbed in any way. And Mr. Chairman, we did receive a letter of objection, and it has been attached to your agenda package. And I was just going to point out on the map where that letter of objection came from. So I'll just go behind you, behind the board. Ingrid, if you could slide over to the east a little bit. Oh, sorry, other way. West. So our parcel's here, our proposed parcel, and the letter of objection came from this subdivision over here. So that takes me to my recommendation, Mr. Chairman, and that is for MPC to move to approve subdivision 25CY12 subject to the following conditions. Number one, the developer is required to obtain approval from Cypress County Public Works for the construction of a new access approach from the internal service road to both parcels being created. The approaches are to be constructed to Cypress County standards prior to the subdivision's registration with Alberta land titles. Number two, it is the developer's responsibility to enter into any necessary agreements with Green Valley Water Association. The developer will be required to provide written evidence that the requirements of the association have been satisfied prior to the subdivision's registration with Alberta land titles. Number three, it is the developer's responsibility to enter into any necessary agreements with St. Mary's River Irrigation District. The developer will be required to provide written evidence that the requirements of SMURD have been satisfied prior to the subdivision's registration with Alberta land titles. And finally, number four, the developer is required to supply copies of any utility right-of-way plans, easements, or agreements which are to be registered as a requirement for any affected utilities to Cypress County prior to the subdivision's registration with Alberta land titles. And that is my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Becky. Mr. Travis Tucksher, are you in attendance? Would you please take one of the chairs up front? So on the microphone in front of you, when requested to speak, there's a button that you press and it'll light up. Would you like to speak to your application at this time?
I don't have anything further to add. I was aware of the report, and I have no issues with the report.
Okay. All right, I will open the floor up to discussion for the Planner Commission. Go ahead, Bill.
My question just relates to the two parcels. So there was, or there still is, I guess, a residence on the subdivided piece, is that correct? It's going to be torn down.
So just for clarity, my residence is on, I guess it would be the east part of the property. Prior, there was the Core Stone Christian School that has been demolished this year, so now it is vacant. So there's nothing on that portion of land that we're looking to subdivide.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dustin.
What is your plan for water on that parcel?
The cistern tank for the domestic water for the house.
Go ahead, Dustin. Okay, Dustin moves approval of subdivision application 25CY12 with conditions as presented. All those in favor? Carried. Your subdivision has been approved, subject to meeting the conditions which were previously discussed. The county will now mail you a copy of your subdivision approval. You are advised to begin working towards completing the necessary conditions and making arrangements to have the approved subdivided area surveyed if you haven't already done so. You have one year from the subdivision's approval date to admit all of the approval conditions and to have the survey plan submitted to Alberta land titles by your surveyor for the registration of the separate title. If you have any further questions, you may contact the planner to discuss them after today's meeting. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Now, we will move on to Ward 2 Development Permit Application 2598. Mr. Lob, are you in attendance? Would you please take one of the chairs up front? Oh, not yet, sorry. Just wait a minute, I'm getting ahead of myself here again today. All right, Becky, again, could you just please present 2598?
I would love to, Mr. Chairman. So this proposal is for a change in use of an existing building to residential, including a setback relaxation of nine feet from the flanking side yard property line and 19 feet from the front property line with site coverage of 33%. This property is located in Ward 2. It's an existing non-conforming use and it's development permit number 2598. The owner applicant is Gregory Lob, and this is located at Plan 3644B Block 7 Lot 16 to 17, which is 401 Second Avenue in Walsh. The property size is 12,000 square feet and it's zoned Hamlet General District. The applicant is proposing a change of use to an existing building from a commercial use to personal residential use. The building has existed on the property since approximately 1948 and is said to have operated as an automotive shop at one time. The building does not meet the setback distance requirements outlined in the current land use bylaw from the front and flanking side property boundaries. This results in a setback relaxation request of 19 feet from the front property line and nine feet from the flanking side property line. The structure currently contains a living area, office, and shop/storage area. There are no development permits on record, sorry, no development permit records on file for this property. However, the building would be considered an existing non-conforming use. The property is located on Second Avenue within the Hamlet of Walsh. As the application states, the applicant intends to utilize a 48 by 38 area for residential living and remainder of the area as a gradge. The applicant has indicated that he will carry out all necessary improvements to bring the building into compliance with the Alberta Building Code, including the replacement of all electrical and plumbing and to install a septic system. The applicant has been working with Cypress County Utilities regarding a water connection. In addition to the interior work, the applicant plans to repair and paint the building within one year and complete window repairs or replacement within two years. In addition to the principal building, the property also contains 120-foot square foot, 120 square foot generator shack, as well as two small sheds. The applicant has proposed to remove the two small sheds to ensure the site coverage does not exceed 33%. In accordance with Section 1661 of the Land Use Bylaw, the Development Authority shall review each development permit application and determine its compliance with the bylaw. When a development permit application includes variance requests or discretionary uses, the Development Authority shall assess the application as outlined based on the following criteria in accordance with Section 646 of the MGA: Unduly interfere with the amenities of the neighborhood or materially interfere with or affect the use, enjoyment, or value of neighboring parcels of land, and the proposed development conforms with the use prescribed for that land or building in the land use bylaw. In reference to legislation, in the Land Use Bylaw 2022-09 under the Hamlet General District, it states that a residence is a permitted use provided that the proposal complies with the regulations outlined in the district. The minimum required setback from the front property line for a principal building is 7.6 meters or 25 feet, and the minimum required setback distance from the flanking side yard is three meters or 10 feet. Maximum site coverage allowance for all structures and hard surfacing is 30%. Section 3.3 Non-Conforming Buildings and Uses and Lots states that a non-conforming land use or building may be continued, but if that is discontinued for a period of six consecutive months or more, any future land use or building must conform to this bylaw. A non-conforming building may continue to be used, but the building may not be enlarged, added to, rebuilt, or structurally altered, except to make it a conforming building for the routine maintenance of the building if the Development Authority considers it necessary or in accordance with the variance powers of the Development Authority. And Section 2.2.6 states that the development officer, unless otherwise stated in the bylaw, is authorized to allow variances of the measurable standards of this bylaw to a maximum of one meter, 3.3 feet, or 10% of the standard, whichever is greater. We did circulate this to Cypress County Public Works, and they replied that water is available and service will come off of Second Avenue. The developer will have to install their own septic system as Walsh has no sanitary collection system. So, Mr. Chairman, I did go out and take some pictures. So here we're looking south at the existing building on the property, and we're sitting on Grant Street. This is looking east at the front of the property. So from the corner of Grant and Second, we're looking north. And same corner, we're looking east. And you can see the stakes in the ground. The applicant has marked the property boundary for the setback, so I think the next picture shows that a little bit better. And then we're looking back west. And the applicant has spent a lot of time, the building was much greener, more green paint when I was out there previously. So here we're looking north at the existing building, and you can see the sheds in the background. Those two little ones are proposed to be removed to meet the site coverage requirements. Those two little ones are proposed to be removed to meet the site coverage requirements. And just looking east. And that's the little generator shack that's on the north of the building. So I'll move on to my recommendation, and I have two options today. So the first one is that MPC-approved development permit application 2598, subject to the following conditions and with the understanding that it will be constructed as outlined in the submitted application. Any changes must be submitted for approval by the development officer or municipal planning commission. And conditions one through seven are standard conditions, so I'll jump to number eight, which is subject to the developer to enter into a development agreement with Cypress County for the exterior renovations of the principal building and for the removal of the two storage sheds. The agreement is to be executed and registered on the Alberta land title prior to commencement of the development. Number nine, a setback relaxation of nine feet from the flanking side yard property line. Number 10, setback relaxation of nineteen feet from the front property line. And number 11, for any future development or improvements, the applicant may require an encroachment agreement with Cypress County. And the second option, Mr. Chairman, is that MPC refused development permit application 2598 as the proposal does not comply with the setback distances as stated in the Hamlet General District in the Land Use Bylaw 2022-09. And that is my report.
Thank you, Becky. Mr. Lob, you can now take a chair up front, please. Would you like, so there's a, you probably heard my last explain, there's a little button there. So would you like to speak to your application at this time?
Yeah, I think the building has got a lot of life left in it and would be better served if someone was actually living in it to help maintain it and help, help just keep what's left of Walsh there as part of its history, which to me, it's kind of important.
Okay, thank you. I'll open the floor to discussion. Nigel, go ahead.
I got one clarification, I guess, guess from Becky there. In your report there, it said that removing those buildings, they'll put the site coverage below thirty-three percent, but later on, the land use bylaw says thirty percent. Is that just a typo or what?
Through the chair, so the maximum allowance is thirty percent in the district. The development officer has a 10% discretion for the extra 3%, so I was incorporating that encompasses the entire building and that generator shack that kind of has to go with the building, so that's where the discretion came from.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, so Dan moves approval of development application 2598 with conditions as presented. All those in favor? So your development permit has been approved, subject to meeting the conditions which were previously discussed. The county will mail you a copy of your development permit. Since this is a discretionary use, there's now a fourteen-day, or sorry, three-week appeal period that the public may appeal the issuance of this permit. The development permit will be advertised in the Cypress Courier Newspaper for a duration of three consecutive weeks. If no appeal is filed within that 21-day period, the development will become valid at that time. If you have any further questions, you may, after this meeting, you may contact the development officer to discuss them. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Next item for consideration is development application 25101. Mr. Elms, are you present? Okay, we're going to move on to the next one in case Mr. Elms is running a little behind.
Mr. Chairman, I believe he is present on Zoom.
On Zoom? Oh, okay, all right. Can you hear us, Mr. Elms?
It appears that we lost him for a moment.
I see Mr. Clausen is in attendance. Is anybody opposed to jumping forward to Mr. Clausen and giving Mr. Elms a little bit of time to reconnect? Okay, Mr. Clausen, would you take one of the chairs up front, please? Oh, sorry, not yet, I'm jumping ahead again. I'm in a bit of a rush this morning, it seems. Okay, so we have development application 25112. Becky, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So development permit 25112, the proposal is to operate a home-based business called Southern Bale Hauling. The owner applicant is Henry Clausen and this is located at Plan 0613189, Block 1, Lot 4, with municipal address number 112402, Range Road 65. Property size is 2.34 acres and it's zoned Country Residential District 1. The applicant is proposing to operate a home-based business in Cypress County for the municipal planning commission's consideration that specializes in bail hauling. This proposal includes the storage of five trucks to be stored on the property. The property is located along Highway 523, approximately 1.6 kilometers west of the City of Medicine Hat boundary. As the applicant's application states, during the summer months, the applicant expects to have three or more employees driving the trucks from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Monday to Saturday. There are no customers or clients visiting the property. The applicant has indicated that no advertising sign will be required at this time and is proposing access to the property from an additional road approach from Range Road 65. Road Approach Permit 25-022 was approved and issued by Cypress County Public Works for the proposed secondary location on July 10, 2025. In the Land Use Bylaw 2022-09 under the Country Residential District 1, it states that home-based business major is a Class II discretionary use. Section 12.12 Home-Based Business Minor, or Major, states the following: "The outside storage of equipment, goods, materials, commodities, or finished products related to a home-based business major use may be permitted if it is screened from adjacent parcels and from public roadways. The outside storage of equipment, goods, materials, commodities, or finished products related to a home-based business major use that is not screened shall be at the discretion of the Development Authority. The display or placement of signage on the premise of a home-based business major use shall be in accordance with Section 15. The home-based business major use shall not generate noise, smoke, steam, odor, dust, fumes, exhaust, vibration, heat, glare, refuse matter, and storage of hazard or combustible materials considered offensive or excessive in the opinion of the Development Authority. At all times, the privacy of the adjacent residential dwelling shall be preserved and the home-based business major use shall not unduly offend surrounding or adjacent residents by way of example, but not limited to excess lighting, late calling of clients of an unreasonable number, traffic congestion, or excessive on-street or off-street parking. The parking of any commercial vehicles, including the number, considered and location, shall be at the discretion of the Development Authority. And in addition to those individuals who permanently reside in the residential building on the subject parcel, up to four additional other employees are permitted as part of the approval and operation of a home-based business major use." We did circulate the application and Cypress County Public Works replied that an approach permit is required, as mentioned, that has since been issued. And Alberta Transportation and Economic Corridors replied that in reviewing the application, the proposed development falls within the permit area of a provincial highway as outlined in the Highways Development and Protection Act Regulation. The proposed development, however, will not cause any concern for ongoing highway operation or future highway expansion. Transportation and Economic Corridors therefore issues an exemption from the permit requirements for the development listed pursuant to Section 25 of the Highways Development and Protection Regulation. And I do have some pictures of the property. So if you remember the property, we're looking north. The applicant's proposing parking where the trucks currently are and also, you can see the other arrow where Ingrid has her mouse on there. This is looking west at the existing residence and driveway from the existing approach. This is looking south with Highway 523 in the background. We're looking northwest at where the trucks would be potentially parked, kind of standing in the second area of parking. So this is looking north, Range Road 65 is running on the right-hand side. And just a view of the existing approach, looking southeast, Range Road 65. And then the proposed parking area is looking east, Range Road 65 is behind the trees. So my recommendation is that MPC-approved development permit 25/112, subject to the following conditions and with the understanding that it will be operated as outlined in the submitted application. Any changes must be submitted for approval by the development officer or municipal planning commission. And numbers one through seven, sorry, eight are standard conditions. So number nine is no signs will be permitted without prior approval by Cypress County. Number 10, subject to a maximum of five commercial trucks being stored on the property. And number 11, subject to a maximum of four employees. And that is my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Becky. Mr. Clausen, would you like to take a chair up front, please? Mr. Clausen, would you like to speak to your application at this time?
No, that was my request and it's all good with me.
Sounds good. All right, I'll open the floor to discussion. Dan?
Yeah, I'm glad to see that you came in because we asked for it on the permit for the building. The only thing I'd like to see added to this is 11 for annual review.
We can, yeah, we can add that to the list, for sure. So number 12 will be subject to annual review.
12? Yep, 12.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Through the chair, if I may ask, just because I don't think that we've had that conversation with Mr. Clausen, if we could just have Becky explain briefly what the annual review condition means so that he's understanding.
Great idea. Thank you.
Yeah, through the chair. So annual review means that every, typically January, February, we go through all the permits that are in that list. We check in with you, see if you're still in business, has anything changed with the business, do you have less or more trucks? We determine if a new permit is required or if everything can just keep operating the way it is. We also determine if we've had any complaints about the business over the last year and try to address any concerns that may have come forward in that time.
Clear? All right, so Nigel has moved approval of development application 25112 with conditions as amended. All those in favor? Carried. So your development permit has been approved, subject to meeting the conditions which were previously discussed. The county will mail you a copy of your development permit. Since this is a discretionary use, there's now a three-week appeal period that the public may appeal the issuance of this permit. The permit will be advertised in the Cypress Courier Newspaper for a duration of three consecutive weeks. If no appeal is filed within the 21-day period, the permit will become valid at that time, will become valid at that time. If you have any further questions, you may contact the staff after today's meeting to discuss them. It looks like we have someone on Zoom? Mr. Elms?
This is William Elms.
Okay, thank you.
Can you let me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I cut you off the last time, sorry.
No problem, thank you. Okay, again, this is development application 25101. Go ahead, Becky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposal is to construct a 40-by-50 shop for personal use with a size relaxation of 400 square feet. This is located in Ward Four and, as you said, development permit number 25/101. The owner applicant is William Elms and this is located at Plan 0213579, Block 1, Lot 3, which is 612303 Highway 41. The property size is 1.9 acres and it has a zoning of Country Residential District 1. The applicant is requesting approval from the municipal planning commission to construct a 2,000-square-foot shop for personal use. This results in a size relaxation of 400 square feet. There are three existing storage buildings located on the property resulting in a total floor area of 2,676 square feet for all accessory buildings. The property is located in a multi-parcels subdivision along Highway 41, approximately 3.6 kilometers northeast of the Hamlet of Dunmore Bound. As the application indicates, the proposed use of the shop is to provide secure storage of personal vehicles, ATVs, a bobcat, and personal belongings. The applicant has also indicated that the shop will be utilized for the repairs and maintenance of personal vehicles and equipment. The shop would allow the applicant to keep the yard tidy. If the application is approved, the applicant is proposing to remove a 16-by-32 storage building and a 10-by-10 storage building once the new shop is completed, however, would not be required to be removed to be in compliance with the land use bylaw. An existing 8-by-8 garden shed would remain on the property. In accordance with Section 16.6.1 of the Land Use Bylaw, the Development Authority shall review each development permit application and determine its compliance with this bylaw. When a development permit application includes variance requests or discretionary uses, the Development Authority shall assess the application as outlined based on the following criteria in accordance with Section 646 of the MGA: unduly interfere with the amenities of the neighborhood or materially interfere with or affect the use, enjoyment, or value of neighboring parcels of land. The proposed development conforms with the use prescribed for that land or building in the Land Use Bylaw. In the Land Use Bylaw 2022-09 under the Country Residential District 1, it states that an accessory building shall not exceed 1,600 square feet in area and the total building area of all accessory buildings shall not exceed 2,800 square feet. When we circulated the application, Cypress County Public Works replied that they have no comments and Alberta Transportation and Economic Corridors replied that the proposed development falls within the permit area of a provincial highway as outlined in the Highways Development and Protection Act Regulation and will require a permit from Alberta Transportation. I do have pictures for you. So here we are, I'm in the property, we're looking southwest with Highway 41 in the background. This is the proposed building site area with some of, you can kind of see some of the sheds on the right that are proposed to be removed. This is from the building site looking out to the internal service road of the subdivision, looking east. This is looking north at the existing residence with the sheds to be removed on the left. This is from the internal service road looking in. We're looking west with Highway 41 in the background and the proposed building site. And just from the internal service road again, looking a little more northwest. And then just, I guess, another shot, so the sheds, this is just a little bit better of a picture of the, all the sheds that are proposing to be removed. That's a better one, yeah, looking south. So I'll move on to my recommendation, Mr. Chairman, and that is for that MPC-approved development permit application 25101, subject to the following conditions and with the understanding that it will be constructed as outlined in the submitted application. Any changes must be submitted for approval by the development officer or municipal planning commission. And numbers one through eight are standard conditions. So number nine is the applicant is responsible to obtain a roadside development permit from Alberta Transportation and Economic Corridors prior to commencement of construction. A copy of the approval is to be submitted to the development officer. And number 10, a size relaxation of 400 square feet for the shop. I have a second option for the board to consider and that is for MPC to move to refuse development permit application 25101 as the proposal does not comply with the maximum accessory building size of 1,600 square feet as stated in the Country Residential District 1 in the Land Use Bylaw 2022-09. And that is my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Becky. Mr. Elms, would you like to speak to your application at this time? Mr. Elms, would you like to speak to your application at this time?
Just about the, do they want to refuse the size is all I'm asking is, so it has to be forty by forty? Because that means with the sixteen hundred square feet, is it?
That is the permitted size at this point. What you're, what we're asking for here is a exemption to that.
So if, so I just have to propose to get the forty by fifty because all my other neighbors have bigger sized shops? And I don't see why I can't have that extra ten feet. It would make so much difference for me because I could get rid of these other sheds I have and just have that extra room. I do have the land for it.
Okay, thank you. Open the floor to discussion. Go ahead, Lloyd. Lloyd moves approval. All right, Lloyd moves approval of application twenty-five slash one-zero-one with conditions as presented. All those in favor? Carried. So your development permit has been approved, subject to meeting the conditions which were previously presented. The county will mail you a copy of your development permit. Since this is a discretionary use, there's now a three-week appeal period that the public may appeal the issuance of this permit. The development permit will be advertised in the Cypress Courier Newspaper for a duration of three consecutive weeks. If no appeals filed within twenty-one days from the date of issue, the development permit will become valid at that time. If you have any further questions, you may contact the development officer to discuss them after today's meeting. Thank you, Mr. Elms.
Thank you. I agree with it.
You too. Next item for consi-
Here comes in only nonapproval.
Yeah, this one's going to be a tough one here. Cave Development Application twenty-five one-fourteen. Mr. Linton? Want to take the chair, please? The hot seat. You can, you can join with Becky. We're not afraid of this one.
We're gonna have to have Rachel on this.
I have just got a, yeah, anyways. Okay, go ahead, Becky. This is development application twenty-five one-fourteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposal is to operate Cypress County Fire Services and Public Works operations within the existing buildings on the property. This is located in Ward eight, as you said, twenty-five slash one-fourteen. The owner and applicant is Cypress County, and this is located at southeast nineteen thirteen six west of the fourth, and municipal address is one-three-three zero-two, Range Road sixty-five. Property size is seventy-seven point three-five acres and it is zoned agricultural district one. The applicant is proposing to operate Cypress County Box Springs Fire Station and for the storage of Public Works equipment for the municipal planning commission's consideration. The proposal includes the use of the existing structures to store equipment in and for personnel to operate from. The property is located on the corner of Highway one and Range Road sixty-five on the town of Red Cliff boundary. As the application states, storage of fire vehicles and Public Works equipment and vehicles will be primarily stored inside the existing buildings, and no outside storage is anticipated. The applicant expects to have thirty employees working on the property. Due to the nature of emergency services, hours of operation are proposed to be twenty-four hours per day, seven days per week. The location offers increased visibility, improved access, and faster response times for emergency services. The applicant has indicated that no advertising sign will be required at this time. In reference to our legislation, the land use bylaw twenty twenty-two oh-nine, under the agricultural district, I'm sorry, that's supposed to be a one, it states that government services is a class-two discretionary use. We did circulate the application and Cypress County Public Works had no comments. Town of Red Cliff replied that the development permit application twenty-five one-fourteen was presented to town council at their regular meeting on July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. A motion was made and carried to receive the application for information. And the city of Medicine Hat replied that they have no concerns with the proposed development. Alberta Transportation and Economic Corridors replied that the proposed development falls within the permit area of a provincial highway as outlined in the Highways Development and Protection Act or regulation and will require a permit from Alberta Transportation. A roadside development permit has since been issued to Cypress County. And I did take some pictures for you. I did not go onto Highway one to take pictures. So from Range Road sixty-five, you're looking south with the existing structures on your Closer look at them. Again, looking south with Highway one, just in the distance, property on the right. And then looking west, this is the existing entrance into the property. And then just a shot north on Range Road sixty-five. So, Mr. Chairman, my recommendation is that MPC-approved development permit application twenty-five one-fourteen, subject to the following conditions, and with the understanding that it will be operated as outlined in the submitted application. Any changes must be submitted for approval by the development officer or municipal planning commission. And these are all standard conditions, one through six. If you'd like me to read through them, please let me know, but that is my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Mr. Linton, would you like to speak to your application?
Thank you through the chair. There will be just one, maybe potential correction would be a storage of two C-cans to support the CR operations that are moving in with that hall.
Okay. Open the floor to discussion. Becky?
Are the C-cans something we should maybe add into the permit right off to get go then? Because one would be discretionary, correct?
Through the chair, the agricultural district allows for up to two storage containers without requiring a permit. So if the emergency services needs to increase that number, then they'll have to come back for another permit.
Okay. Okay, Destin moves approval of development application twenty-five one-fourteen, as presented. All those in favor? Cypress County Grain Storage and Fire Department.
Grain Storage and Fire.
Have you seen grain bins?
It would be in an elevator in no time.
Yeah. Put the hose in there and have like a hose. I didn't know you guys bought that building.
Yeah, we.
Okay, that does it for our applications for today. We'll move on to the planner's report.
Through the chair, the planner's report for August twenty twenty-five is supplied for information. Development permits issued are attached for information, and arising out of this, we did have a notice of refusal that went out to an applicant for a subdivision due to a lack of information being supplied. So we did give the applicant ample opportunity to supply the information. Ultimately, it was not, so we denied the application on that basis, and no repeal has been received. So they'll have to wait six months to reapply unless the application is deemed to be complete and all information is submitted.
That's not the application that's attached there, is it? No.
No, through the chair. The bylaw twenty twenty-five seventeen is a land use amendment that was approved by council and will be forthcoming to planning commission at the September meeting, I believe.
Any discussion regarding the planner's report? Destin moves approval of the planner's report as presented. All those in favor? Okay, I guess that's it for today's meeting. I adjourned. I don't adjourn yet.
Just one, just a question for MPC. We see a lot of non-conforming use buildings coming before MPC, being that on country residential two, it's allowed to be forty by forty or sixteen hundred square feet, where if we were, most common building size these days is forty by sixty, which is twenty-four hundred square feet. Would it be something to maybe for MPC to refer back to council that maybe a change in that bylaw to that twenty-four hundred square feet mark? So we don't see so many non-conforming uses?
I think then we'll see forty by eighties.
The reason I say forty by sixty is that's a very common, like, building.
Oh, it is.
It's the common building size that everybody has, and it's a common kit size. That's where I'm kind of begging the question.
What was about three years ago we amended the bylaws for the size?
Through the chair. The last time that the accessory building sizes in the bylaw were increased was two thousand sixteen, so it has been, it has been quite a while. We're actively reviewing the land use bylaw to bring it forward to council here in the new year, and accessory building sizes is an item that we're reviewing. And we actually conducted an assessment of our variances that planning commission has seen over about a three-year period. All of them have been in CR one district. So I think that kind of gives us a bit of an indication that there probably is a bit of a discrepancy, so we're looking at what is that appropriate size, and we'll bring that forward for council consideration. But I don't think that there's a harm in the planning commission passing a motion requesting that council review the accessory structure sizes in the CR one district of the bylaw.
The only, the only concern that I have is, I think, from, you know, looking at the whole size of the property in relation to that size of that building is important because if, you know, on a big acreage-
It still has to conform with site coverage though, correct?
It still has to conform with site coverage, yes, which is thirty percent, correct?
It does not?
No site coverage limitations in the CR one district, but that will be part of our assessment to bring forward to council and probably also doing a bit of a scan of other similar municipalities to see what the average is. And are we in line or are we out of line with what the standard is?
It's important to have the consideration in relation to the size of the CR one property because they're not all equal. Go ahead, Bill.
I think already in reading through some of the bylaws, there is a differentiation if you have a one or two-acre property, that there is a different set of rules for the size of buildings that can be on there. Is that not correct?
Through the chair, we have various country residential districts that are set on almost a bit of a sliding scale. So if you're a country residential one district, the size of your accessory buildings and overall accessory building sizes are lesser than they would be on a CR two district. So CR one, you're one and a half to five-acre size, and then CR two is increased from five to ten. But there is quite a large range between those building sizes, as you-
Right. So, and a one and a half acre parcel out in, you know, ten miles from Dunmore is different than a one and a half acre mark parcel mile from Dunmore, so.
I guess.
And it's a big range, one and a half to five acres. That's a, that's a big size difference.
That differential would be too if it was IDP or not, because that would give you about where it is, where you can make that change. I don't know, just something I've been seeing and I thought it was worth bringing forward, so.
Want to make a motion or are you just going to?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that Kayleen had said earlier that council, or MPC recommend council to review building size, or secondary building sizes on CR one properties.
Okay, we have a motion. All those in favor of Destin's motion?
Accessory buildings, sir, yes.
All those in favor? Carried.
Week after we make it bigger, somebody will want a bigger one.
Hundred percent, hundred percent.
Leave that up to council. I mean, most guys don't. What do they do?
That's right.
Okay, I think that concludes our business for today. Next meeting is September ninth, twenty twenty-five. I adjourn the meeting.